For those of you who are current here for the first time, I'll explain the procedure briefly. If you are an applicant, the applicants are called by the order of the calendar. The applicant will proceed to show you, introduce themselves, and begin the introduction of the application at hand. When the applicant's presentation is completed, questions only from the Borough President and his staff will be entertained. No cross-conversations and no questions from the audience. Then, anyone who wishes to speak on an item, please complete one of these yellow forms, indicate that you are for or against the item, it means by which we can contact you, and the item-specific number that you are interested in. You will be allowed three minutes to speak and give your address. The sound of the bell, please wrap up and we'll move on to the next speaker. If you have any questions, my name is Lisa Atkins and this is John Ah Choi, who are staff of the Borough President and vice president and welcome again.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning, again. My name is Jay Bond, the Borough President's team staff. The Borough President is expected maybe in the next twenty minutes or so, but she asked me to start the meeting for her and it's already started. We're going to go a little bit out of order, from the order that you have in front of you, and everybody will call the first items.
Calendar item number two, BSA number 20164275PD. The applicant is Gerald James Halliendo, affected community board number seven.
Good morning. My name is Sandhya Nostu, representing the applicant. This is an application before the Board of Standards appeals for a special permit for a proposed physical culture establishment, which would legalize the existing use that's located at 132-15A14 Avenue. The space is currently occupied by a proposed PCE, which is 13,496 square feet. This site is located within an existing retail mall, in a one-story building with basement and mezzanine. It provides accessory parking. All the fire safety measures are in place. There's existing fire alarms, the space is fully sprinklered, emergency lights, all the exit signs. And they have been operating since 2013. This application would legalize the existing use. We are providing 35 parking spaces dedicated to this use, accessory parking. All the levels of the municipal cultural establishment are accessible on grade. However, there is... To go from level to level, it's not handicap accessible. And that was one of the concerns. We did meet with the Community Board Seven and they voted in favor of approving this application. Twenty-nine in favor, eight against, but they did have these three stipulations. And one was for the Board of Standards and Appeals to be mindful that the owner shall provide reasonable accommodations for persons with disability and compliance with handicap accessibility. We are doing that. We are providing reasonable accommodations. The space is accessible on every level, on grade. We're looking into installing a chair lift on the ground floor, but to put an elevator in this space is physically impossible. The heights are very... They're big heights here and an elevator is just not possible. The other stipulation was to provide a canopy above the exterior handicap accessible entrance to protect patrons while they're waiting, because if someone in a wheelchair would want to access this... The owners are installing a door buzzer and camera and that would alert the employee to come and open the door. And so, if they were waiting, for example, the Community Board wanted these patrons to be protected and the owner is installing that as well as the third stipulation, which is a door buzzer and cameras to alert employees that patrons may be waiting at the handicap accessible entrance. The owner of this establishment has been in the community for his family for over forty years. They live there. They're vested in this community and they'd like to continue their business. They have a larger membership of people who live within the community. A lot of them walk, but there is a lot of ample parking on site. Are there any questions?
Can you just tell us more about the canopy, where it was placed in relation to the building front?
Okay, so you have this photo there of this third one.
The reception?
Yes, there. They would provide the canopy, because that's where... Right, this is where they would be...
Can you tell us why they could not raise this 2013 without the special permit?
This... There was actually... The space was occupied by a dance school, which used Route Nine, and gymnasium, which is also a used Route Nine. This tenant used the space and they were unaware that they had to obtain a special permit for a PCE and they were operating with that C O. But since they realized they need a special permit, they engaged our office to represent them in things so they could be operating legally.
What prompted the real thing? They want to have work or something?
Yes, they did want to do some alterations. They filed at the Buildings Department, at which time they were told they had to change the use to a PCE. A lot of people are under the assumption that Use Route Nine, a PCE, falls under Use Route Nine, but it does not, it's not actually the same.
So along with this application, are they filing for any alterations, changes to this site?
Yes, they have done, they have filed an alteration type two and they have done alteration work.
So they have an alteration permit pending?
No, that was approved. The alteration work was filed under an alteration type two and that was approved. They obtained their permits, then they did the work. But the change of use to a PCE was filed under an alteration type one and that's pending until we obtain the BSA approval and then they will have to obtain a C O with the change of use and the term. We are asking for ten years, which is customary for a PCE.
So this gym is located in a small shopping center?
Yes.
And you mentioned that there are thirty-five dedicated parking spaces. I'm just curious how that works. Does generally these types malls have open parking?
Yeah, total, in total, there are 189 spaces, which is more than what's actually required and...
But they're not necessarily dedicated to what were used by the gym or...
Well, they're not des... Yes, I should clarify. They're not designated that you could only park here for the PCE.
But you're estimating the gym would generate thirty-five? Thank you.
Thank you.
I close the hearing on this item.
Calendar item number three, ECU number 150395PCQ. The applicant is the administration for Children's Services, affected community board number twelve.
Good morning, members of the Borough President's Office. My name is Kenneth Robinson. I am with the General Counsel's Office of the Administration of Children's Services. I also have a couple of colleagues here who will be available to answer questions if necessary. We are seeking the Borough President's approval for an acquisition, in this case meaning a leasing of the space located at 117-16 Saffron Boulevard for continued use as a childcare center. This has been a... An operation of the childcare center through ACS and its predecessors, HR8, since 1973. At this point, the lease terms being negotiated are for ten years from completion of all improvements. Right now, they're apparently in a license agreement. The prior lease expired on October 31st of 2015, several months after we filed this application. And once the ULRP is approved, hopefully, then the city will exercise its option to lease. There'll be the termination option after five years if necessary. Space is approximately 14,475 square feet, maybe seventy-five of interior space and vouched for a rooftop playground. Contractor currently is All My Children. We have a program model as childcare. There are fifty available seats, twenty for toddlers and thirty for preschoolers. At this point, we're at forty-eight children in row, ninety-six percent capacity at this point. There are fifteen staff members and it's a two-story building. Cellar contains utilities. And there are five classrooms on the first floor and there is a partial second floor, which contains administrative offices, staff lounge, and office of hand. We're in Jamaica. It's near Q6. At Q6 Limited, buses are the most convenient transportation and we are now opening machines.
So you're saying that the terms be negotiated, so right now you're looking at ten years.
Ten years, right.
But then that lease negotiation is here an option for the owners?
The owner has... We've asked for it. The owner at this point is refusing to include an option for renewal, which means they have to go back to the drawing boards when the ten years are reaching expiration.
Is this... What was the term of the lease?
I think I would defer to...
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
Can you please come to the conference? So the last incident to us, the parent began in 2005.
I'm sorry, in 1995, they made a wire in 2005.
So the ten-year term, is that because the landlord is reluctant to be a holder?
I don't think that is the case. He's not elected, but it is the direction that we're following from the City Hall to have this duration for the lease.
Because I thought I just heard that I asked about if there's an option for renewal and that landlord is not...
Currently, there is no renewal option in negotiations under play. But there is a possibility that, you know, if the Borough President wants and if the super planning wants, then DCAST, which is the Department of Children's Services, which negotiates these agreements on our behalf, will go back to the landlord and perhaps include a couple of renewal options each for five years. So that will prolong the agreement to twenty years.
Well, I don't know if it's necessarily a preference. I guess it's trying to understand, is this a DCAST negotiation?
It also takes into account the needs in the area. So we don't know what the needs would be in opinion from now.
Well, being this center has been here since 1973, probably such is the case. Generally speaking, the city, the shortage of take for children. The other question is, you know, in the past, the management of these buildings, so what is the thought about that?
The new lease agreements that are being negotiated have more stringent requirements in terms of what the landlord is responsible for, for our new services and for the tenant, which is the city ACS, is responsible in terms of maintenance and repairs. There was extensive work that was done twenty years ago under the previous lease agreement and a lot of these systems are failing. So the new lease agreement have a long scope of work that will be performed as soon as the lease agreement is executed.
So related to negotiating the permit for this site, is the scope of work?
Correct.
And can you characterize the scope of work as minor repairs, maintenance, or...
Oh, it's major repair. Just to give you an example, the roofing system that was replaced twenty years ago had a roofing warranty of fifteen years, you know, and we have the Brazilian playhoppers on the roof that have a ten-year warranty. So the warranties have expired. So the entire roof has to go and the new roof has to be replaced and including the playhoppers. I'm just giving you an example.
Right.
And so, building, why they'll be made are improvements?
So would you say that, let's say, the heating, cooling of the building, those systems are being repaired with the shape of the new place?
My understanding is recently the landlord has replaced the ACS system in this area.
Because I'm sure that all these main repair systems, repairs factor into the lease negotiation. And is that being done at the expense of the landlord or is the city?
That's negotiated by DCAST and it's typically between both parties. The city invests on the interior work, organizes heating and floor replacements, the things that we use, and the landlord is typically responsible for the building systems. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Close the hearing. I agree. Next slide.
Calendar item number four, ULRP number C170180CQ. The applicant is Eric Gladwick, affected community board number seven.
Hello, good morning. Good to see you. Not quite as pretty as the Borough President is, but you're a good second best.
I will roll that again.
Thank you for hosting our absence. My name is Eric Gladwick. As you know, Mr. Bond, but for everybody else, I'm an attorney and I'm representing the applicant for this rezoning application in Stemax Realty, which is a rezoning from M11 to R7A with the C22 overlay, excuse me, which is right there on the roadmap. And this is the property right now. It's a rather non-district, one-story building. You can see it right here with a series of commercial uses, most notably the Benvenor shop. You can see right there the paint shop, there's some other historical commercial manufacturing, light manufacturing. Good morning, Madam Borough President.
Gladwick, how are you?
Very good to see you. We were just talking to Mr. Bond on his replacement of you.
He does a good job, right?
He did a very good job.
There you go. Thank you.
So you're right on time, right on cue. We were just starting the conversation, talking about the application for a rezoning to an R7A C22, which is in the corner of Farrington and 35th Avenue in Flushing. It's located in Community Board Seven. It's in the last vestige of an M1 district along 35th Avenue. And I'll hobble over there. Hobbling a little bit. I injured my foot in a bouncy castle accident. They're not quite as harmless as they seem.
It's right here.
Yes, they are not. So this is the property right here. You can see it here in its current zoning designation. It's an M1 district that extends all the way back basically to the White Stone Express, right? But along 35th Avenue, as I'm sure you're quite familiar with, especially in the last year or so, there's been quite a lot of development, including the Zoo Brothers are developing on the corner of Prince Street and 35th Hotel Complex, which I'll speak about in a second, where the building's going to go rather tall. That was a rezoning years ago to R6. And the rest of the block, as you can see it all around us on 35th, is in fact zoned R6 with actually the only cutout being our property, which is between Linden and Farrington on 35th. And I was pointing out to your predecessor, Mr. Bond, a moment ago that this is the building right now that exists right here. Rather non-district, one-story, nineteen twenties building that has light, Benvenor store, light retail, retail, now Use Route Six retail. Next door to us, we're asking to rezone this entire block front. So this will be our proposed rezoning to R7A C23. The block front includes our property here, just shown right here, as well as property next door. That's included within the rezoning. The property next door is a parking lot for Flushing Town Hall. They recently redeveloped that parking lot and they're using it as accessory parking through Flushing Town Hall. We have met with Flushing Town Hall about our development plan. We met with them about a year ago. They've indicated that they're not opposed to the project. So long as we adequately protect the investment they made in the parking lot next door, their landscaping and their paving. And we agreed that, of course, we would be respectful of that. We are proposing on our site an R7A C23's proposal, which would allow the development of this building. This is showing you on Linden Boulevard frontage and this is 35th. There'd be a parking entrance here on Linden Boulevard side where the cars would get in. The building would be an eight-story building, which... It's Jessica Rubenski. She's acting as panel white today. So I'm almost done. That's the building there that would be proposed. It's an R7A development. The building is proposed to be a total of 72,000 square feet. It would have a total of 76 apartments within it. Twenty-two of those would be affordable at option two, which is at eighty percent, thirty percent of the units at eighty percent of the area median income. And that would result in twenty-two affordable units, ranging in rents anywhere from $761 for a studio at the low end to $2,406 at the highest end for a three-bedroom apartment. But there's also, of course, lesser rents within there as you go through there. You can get a one-bedroom is as little as, one of them is $963 and so forth and so on. So those are the ranges of the incomes. Going back to the building itself, this is the site right here. And as I mentioned a moment ago, these are the two Zoo Brothers sites next door. Our building is proposed to be 95 feet tall. We're in an R7 district. Next door to us in the R6 district, the Zoo Brothers, you can see are going up quite higher than us. Hundred forty-seven feet on one side, hundred sixty-two feet on the other side. And then as you go across the street from us, you see there are buildings that range in height from 95 feet, 49, 71, 69, and 94. What we're trying to demonstrate to you is that what we're proposing here, which is a 95-foot-tall building, fits squarely within the context, both of what's already existing on 35th Avenue, but also what's up and coming, specifically with the Zoo Brothers site, which is quite monstrous at 147 feet, 162 feet. So this is substantially lower than those two buildings. We will have parking, of course. There'll be parking for 68 cars. Sixty-one is what's needed, so it'll be overparked. And we are providing ground floor retail, approximately 12,600 square feet of ground floor retail. So in summary, it's a request for a rezoning from M1 to R7A with the C22 overlay. It will allow for a 72,000-square-foot, 72,000-square-foot building. 12,000 square feet of that square footage will be commercial. It'll have a total of 76 units, 22 of which will be affordable, and it'll be 95 feet tall. We've met with Community Board Seven on multiple occasions and I'm sure you've had a chance to read through the paperwork, so I will alert you to what occurred to Community Board Seven. Community Board Seven was not happy with the C2 overlay that we were proposing. I disagreed with them on that front. I felt from a planning perspective, we were very accommodating. Our client is anxious to build and would be happy with the rezoning if it didn't have the commercial overlay, but of course would be happier if it had the commercial overlay. And we feel the commercial overlay here makes sense because 35th Avenue is already a commercial block. There's commercial on the side already at the ground floor. Nonetheless, Community Board Seven did not feel it was appropriate and we did agree with them, that we would agree to whatever their conditions were. And they have asked Councilman Koo to remove the C2 overlay that's been certified on the application when it gets to the city council level. So we have agreed with their request because we weren't there to fight with them. We do like the application as proposed with the C2 overlay, but Community Board Seven felt it was important that be removed. Councilman Koo gave his guarantee that he would remove it at the end of the process. So that's what happened to Community Board Seven. They approved it with that condition. So you have the whole story. That's all.
So if Councilman Koo doesn't remove it, you know, you haven't agreed with the community board?
We have an agreement with the community board. We've all agreed at the community board level that it would be removed at the council level. So that is the plan right now. That's the way the proceeding is proceeding right now. We would like to have the commercial overlay, but Community Board Seven felt it was important and we did agree with them that if that's what they felt is important, we would go along with it. And Councilman Koo gave, in no uncertain terms, a letter stating that he would in fact remove it when it gets to the city council.
And your issue was, I mean, I think the city planning had some issues about noncompliance from the other stores on the lots?
Yeah, well, the site is improved. This was the discussion with Community Board Seven. The site is already improved upon ground for commercial uses and that's what we were seeking to simply maintain in the new development. So we thought it made sense, but...
Well, it's already clear that the lustre density too, changing.
That was Chuck Abiliant's counterargument, exactly. That was Chuck Abiliant's great counterargument. So again, we're sort of like the kid in the middle between mom and dad. We're not taking much of a stance that we would like the commercial overlay. We certainly would. That's how it was certified. But if the councilmen and the community board felt in their wisdom that they would like to see it removed, then we have no choice but to agree with their request.
Any questions?
Yeah, so if this commercial overlay is removed, currently have about 1400 commercial stuff?
Yes. Yes. That would change to residential use and would increase the number of units from its current 76 units to 93 units. To 93. It would go up. It would only increase the number of affordability units by one, from the current 27 to 26. From the current 26 to 27. But the square footage of everything would slightly increase, because the MIH is based upon a square footage. It's not based upon a drawing account. So...
And the existing businesses, are they all...
They're all now, it's been the same owner for many, many years, so they're all very, everybody's very well aware of what's occurring. I'm not sure if they're on month-to-month, but they're all aware of what's occurring. They've been offered the chance to come into the building when it gets redeveloped if it doesn't have a commercial overlay. If it doesn't have a commercial overlay, they all understand that they'll have to vacate. And everybody's been discussed, and everybody's aware, and it's the same owner that owns it now. It's developing it, so it's... There's a communication.
All right, anything else?
That's all. This is almost done. Thank you very much.
Great. You don't have any speakers on the project, so this side is closed.
Thank you.
Returning calendar item number one. Your number one, finish, zero, three, provide, one, CQ, the applicant, FQY, and Department of City Planning. The community board, number four, please.
Good morning, Madam Borough President. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before you take. On this very important fire department mission, my name is David Arne, and I'm Chief of Staff, the Deputy Fire Commissioner for Support Services. I am joined today by our Chief of Operations, we have all commanded, Chief of Baggage, our Chief of Staff for Government Affairs, Paul Simmons. The action for you this morning is for site selection and acquisition of an approximately 19,000-square-foot parcel of private property at 116-11 Beach Channel for our earthquake park section to increase to B-14. The purpose of this action is to build an approximately 10,000-square-foot firehouse scheduled 268 by 137. These companies are presently located approximately 200 yards from the proposed site of 257 Beach 116th Street. This action is being advanced to not only relocate these companies from a 105-year-old operationally and logistically inadequate, as well as a seriously dilapidated and structurally failing facility, but to provide this area points for a post-hurricane standing flood-resistant firehouse with additional operational and storage capacity to address major weather events. In 2014, the Department Director of Architectural and Engineering Consulted to perform a condition survey of the existing firehouse to determine the extent of water infiltration damage. Consultants found many of the building's systems had failed or had reached the end of their useful life. The building has experienced significant water infiltration resulting in damage to the preliminary walls and interior ceilings. Significant cracking was also found in the existing terracotta corners and trim, but brick walls as well. The building's exterior wood piles, existing wood piles, have been breached, which is accelerating deterioration, and asbestos-containing materials were found in several areas. While the extent of the full deterioration could not be known without a target demolition of the city landmark firehouse to identify the seep undersea conditions. The consultant found severe damage to the exterior of brick walls and structural steel facade support system. The existing brick walls have horizontal and diagonal sheer cracks, which have most likely been caused by the corrosion of the steel support members embedded in the brick walls and stone facade system. Since many of these problems remain ongoing, our consultant recommended annual building monitoring by an engineer or architect, who then documented any and all structural problems and make recommendations for repairs. Clearly, this facility has passed its useful life. However, renovating this firehouse comes with a number of issues. First and foremost, these companies cannot be relocated for a renovation project, as this would create a large gap in our operational response area. Next, because of the size, the facility cannot be renovated to bring in the additional equipment, such as high axle rescue vehicles or additional support equipment used by our swift water teams, which we believe are necessary to meet future weather events in this area. Third, due to deterioration of the building's support products, as well as overall condition, and as noted, a digital monitoring and repairs would require moving forward. Finally, a government renovation project, given its landmark status, would still prohibit the agency from making the facility as flood-resistant as possible by relocating the building's mechanical systems above the floodplain level. As such, the agency looks to cite the facility. Due to its proximity to the existing firehouse, the agency chose the former HSBC Bank at 116-11 Beach Channel Drive as the optimal location for this new facility. As you see by the draft running, the agency has developed for this project a division, which of course may be modified during the design process. A three bay firehouse east west of Mount Beach Channel Drive. However, because we would have available square footage on this proposed site, the department looked to create a spur of drive-through facility. This would enhance the safety of our members when returned to course, as well as reducing traffic along Beach Channel Drive. The agency looks to build a flood-resistant facility. Here, we envision a facility with all mechanical systems placed above the floodplain level and an apparatus floor with space for the response vehicles and miscellaneous equipment. Most efficient, we would be able to relocate prior to any major weather event. Additionally, the apparatus floor would be designed with flood-resistant materials, so should there be a major weather event with flooding in the facility, especially the apparatus floor, it would be placed back in service in quick fashion. A messy level would include a sitting room, dining room, and kitchen. The proposed building's second floor would include a supervisor's office, bunk room, male and female firefighter bathrooms, locker rooms, and bunk room, a training room, study area. Additionally, and as with all fire department facilities, we plan to install green technology, such as a green roof, a skylight to bring natural lighting to the facility, and other items such as high-efficiency lighting and solar water heat to reduce energy consumption. Meanwhile, the proposed site will also provide off-street parking for on-duty members, and not the agency's authorized parking on Beach 116th Street to be turned back to general use by the public. The fire department hopes you support this action. We believe the proposed site is the correct location to not only maintain emergency response times, but to replace an outmoded and structurally failing firehouse while providing this community with a 21st-century flood-resistant facility, which contains the necessary emergency response equipment we require to render aid during major weather events. In closing, I'd like to thank you again for your time this morning. And I, Chief Baggage, are available to answer any questions you may have in relation to this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So just so we have it in one spot on the record, what is there now?
The existing site is a former HSBC Bank building, which has been vacant since Hurricane Sandy.
So it's dilapidated?
Pardon?
It's dilapidated?
It's dilapidated, yes, ma'am.
It's out of use. And it's a 9,000 square foot?
The...
Well, it's larger.
The lot itself is about 19,000 square feet, and we're proposing to build a 10,000-square-foot facility with off-street parking.
And it is impossible to build where you are?
The problem with building where we are, first, the landmark status, really, it paves on our efforts to bridge the Rockways. The equipment we need post-sandy will eliminate amount of footage and restricts all the landmark status. Relocating the companies, we would be required to relocate one company up to, and just return, actually, like the Chief Baggage wants to do the operational questions.
Due to the unusual layout of Rockaway, that presents operational problems to us. Typically, when we do a renovation of a full firehouse like this, we move all companies to adjacent firehouses. That is not possible in Rockaway areas. Going west to closest firehouse is about three miles out, is on Beach 169. That's inch 329. Going to the east, the next available firehouse is inch 266, I believe, on approximately Beach 93. So there's a four-mile lap. If in fact, if we were forced to renovate the existing firehouse, as David said, it would not meet in any way, shape, or form our operational requirements in the future. And then it would also force us some way to most likely construct some kind of temporary facility in that area to address the operational response policies here. Practition's there.
In terms of the community board recommendation, they recommended a whole site. Can you address that?
Yes, sir. The community board recommended that we examine the possibility of building this site on the former Rockaway Park gas manufacturing site between Beach 108 to Beach 112th Street. This parcel, which was a gas manufacturing plant from the 1870s, almost 1960s, has serious contamination issues, which the current owner, National Grid, has been working to rectify. We have been in contact with National Grid, and they have been remediating the site and have installed metal sheeting down 108 feet, as well as forcing route into an area around that level to keep the contaminants at bay, as well as removing topsoil and contaminant. Unfortunately, and this is our main issue, that National Grid is still in more or less limbo as to how they can move forward, because their remediation activities must first be reviewed and approved and report issued by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, where they will make note of allowable uses, uses for the site moving forward. And until that process is completed, and our conversations with the New York State DDC, that one occurs till next March, we are then in this kind of gray area, where we have no plan to move forward. Meanwhile, the existing firehouse continues to deteriorate. So additionally, the board had asked us if we could build a, a whole, in a better term, a super resilient facility that would be approximately 12 feet above the floodplain level. And clearly, we explored with the Parks Department, as they examined similar projects, and they found the cost to be extremely high. Plus, the fire department has about $21 million in our capital budget for acquisition, design, and construction. It's our belief, and we're still waiting for some data from the Parks Department, but a word that was said to me was, that development of this nature, especially with our needs, when you think about something that would be that high, trying to get down to the street level, the angle of the ramp, because of the geometry of our fire apparatus, to reach the street level coming from something so high, that would require the agency to take actually even more land and develop more sizable operations. Additionally, one of the things that the community board was asking, could we build such a facility where if a hurricane standing type of event were to happen, we would not evacuate? Chief Baggage, the Chief Baggage has any operational question on that?
Yes. At the community board here, a number of members did say that we should build something that would be a super site, that first responders, police, and fire shelter in place during the height of a hurricane, such as Sandy or more so. I told the community board, there is no way, shape, where I would guarantee that we would let our people shelter in place once the full evacuation is ordered of Rockaway. There were a lot of problematic issues of that. First responders get injured or something like that, there will be no way to evacuate them to hospitals if we're in the height of a hurricane. So our philosophy to the general public, and especially our people, we believe that evacuation for this type of event, if it in fact comes, would be to move everybody off the peninsula into a safe place and reoccupy Rockaway once it's safe to do so. So we, as the operational people, reserve that right to, there's no way we'll guarantee we'll keep our people on the peninsula in every event of hurricanes.
Anybody to speak on the issue? No speakers? The item is closed.
Thank you.
Calendar item number five. Your number N-170425CQY. The applicant, Department of City Planning. The best community board, one, two, five, nine, ten, twelve.
I don't have the login information. I have a presentation here, but I need to log in, sorry. Is there a way to slide through?
Very good job.
Well, this is trying.
Good morning. My name is Amanda Iyer. I'm from the Department of City Planning, and I'm here to present the proposal and the amendment. Thank you for allowing me to speak. The proposal I'm here to present involves requiring a special permit for new self-storage facilities in industrial business zones. We understand that self-storage facilities have generated concern among communities and industrial advocates, and like many, the city wants to support industrial jobs in IBZs. This proposal is aiming to strike a balance between protecting the city's most active industrial areas, which are the IBZs, and also the real demand that exists in New York City for self-storage, which is already limited as to where it can locate in New York City. This proposal was first incorporated in the Ten Point Industrial Action Plan that Mayor de Blasio announced in November of 2015. The Ten Point Industrial Action Plan had several components, and all of those were geared towards facilitating economic and industrial development in the city's most active industrial areas, the IBZs. And the restrictions on self-storage were announced as part of that effort. IBZs, they were first established in 2006, and they process that involved city agencies, elected officials, and the public. And the areas were further expanded in 2013. Industrial business zones are New York City's most active industrial areas, and employment in those areas is over 68% industrial, and we know that those areas are critical for a range of industries, that provide exciting opportunities for a range of industries, going from wholesale trade, to construction, to manufacturing, to transportation, warehousing, and also, sorry, I already said warehousing. We also know that since 2010, industrial employment has been growing in IBZs, and this effort is part of helping that growth continue. The Industrial Action Plan that Mayor de Blasio announced builds on a series of existing policies. There are tax incentives for industrial businesses in these areas, and there are IBZ service providers that help industrial businesses grow, thrive in these areas. All of these initiatives are there to support economic and industrial growth in IBZs. So the proposed restrictions on self-storage make sense in this clear, in the context of this clear economic development goal for these areas. In the context of this proposal, we are talking about IBZs, but we're calling them designated areas and M districts. That's because IBZs are a tax program and have not yet been established in zoning resolution as boundaries. This is the first time IBZs would be incorporated as a boundary in zoning resolution. It also meant that we needed to adjust, make some adjustments to the boundaries in order to make the boundaries conform to zoning standards. That being said, there are almost no differences between the IBZ boundaries and the proposed designated M districts, except for that they exclude the airport areas. So both JFK and LaGuardia Airport areas have been excluded from the proposed areas of applicability, as well as the Ridgewood, the Ridgewood IBZ has very funky boundaries, if you're familiar with it, and we rationalize them in order to have the proposal apply there.
What does that mean? You rationalize them or do they have the proposal apply there?
It's, so, for zoning, we don't want the zoning to apply to individual tax lots, and in some instances, the IBZ boundaries carve out individual, especially residential tax lots, or will incorporate some individual manufacturing-use properties.
So whether do you, do you have to know, or it's not part of the original program?
So we took those boundaries and this applies specifically to the Ridgewood IBZ. We tried to incorporate as much of the existing IBZ and drew more layer zoning boundaries over the existing IBZ. So that means that in some instances, parts of the IBZ currently are now, are part of, parts of the IBZ.
Did you put in more than the IBZ zone, or did you take out some of the IBZ?
It's a bit on both ends. It's just a switching of a few tax lots, but in some instances, we excluded parts that are in the IBZ. It's just a few tax lots.
And in some instances, you included parts that were not in the IBZ.
And in some instances, you included parts that were not in the IDZ?
Yes, but this is exclusively for the IDZ, for the original IDZ, yes. But I suggest to take a close look at the boundaries. They are a tiny bit different, but the original boundaries were very hard to justify for zoning purposes. That is how we would, how we would implement the restriction there.
But again, you included portions that were not part of the IDZ and you excluded portions that were part of the IDZ.
Yes, we did.
Make the ones where you wanted.
Uh huh. Thanks. The proposal's main areas are located in the four boroughs, but they exclude Manhattan. Manhattan doesn't have any IDZs and so this proposal doesn't apply to any areas, wouldn't apply to any areas in Manhattan, I do. So what is the issue with self-storage? In IDZs, which are the city's most active industrial areas, we think that the unregulated development of self-storage detracts from the city's long-term goals for these areas. Self-storage is a low job generating use. According to our calculations, it generates about 5 employees per facility. It serves primarily households, between 70 and 80% of customers are said to be households. That does mean that 20 to 30% of customers of self-storage facilities are also businesses, but it does serve predominantly households. And finally, self-storage tends to occupy very large lots that are located along truck routes or highways and those are the kinds of sites that we think would be optimal for industrial businesses. So in that sense, self-storage combines three characteristics. It's the low job generation, the fact that it primarily serves households, and then the fact that it prefers these large sites along highways. And those three characteristics make it, make it conflict with the city's economic development goals for IDZs. We think that restricting these facilities in IDZs is necessary because we hear that industrial businesses have a hard time finding appropriate sites in New York City and we want such important sites to remain in IDZs. Sorry. This slide just has a few examples, some of them in Queens, where we think a more job intensive industrial business could have located. These are large sites that are located right next to highways and in that sense, self-storage development on this site is regarded as a lost opportunity. Just regarding self-storage today in New York City, there are about 240 facilities. They are classified as a warehouse use group 16D and they're currently permitted in all C8 and M districts. The areas where we are proposing a restriction cover a portion of the M districts where self-storage is currently allowed as a right. As you can see, self-storage facilities are relatively dispersed in New York City. They exist in every borough and although they tend to sit along highways. And about one quarter of all existing, currently existing self-storage facilities are within the IDZs or the designated M districts. Here's just a map of Queens that shows the areas where self-storage would be restricted and the areas where it still would be permitted as right. Well, I guess the airport areas doesn't, don't really count to this, but in pink you can see the proposed areas for restriction and in red and blue, areas where self-storage would still be, in orange, red, and blue, sorry, the areas where self-storage would still be permitted. We think that with this proposal, it would be particularly good for the IDZs because optimal industrial sites will increasingly be available for job, for job-intensive industrial businesses and we think that the effect on other M and C8 districts will be relatively modest. Firstly, their, M and C8 districts are widely mapped and they exist in all boroughs and we don't expect a sudden concentration of self-storage facilities in any of these N or C8 districts in particular. And also, we have seen about two to three self-storage facilities built in IDZs in the entire city on a yearly basis, so if any shift would occur, it should be a very numerous whole one. You can also find more detailed maps by community district on our website of these proposed areas. Sorry, just to mention, Queens, there are about 63 existing facilities and about a quarter of those are in the IDZs. What we're proposing to do is a City Planning Commission special permit for new, for the development of new self-storage facilities in IDZs. And we think that case by case, site-specific review process will ensure that self-storage development doesn't represent a significant lost opportunity for future siding of an industrial, more job-intensive business. And the way we are writing this text is that we would only have self-storage facilities come in for a special permit, but not other kinds of warehousing or moving businesses just because those tend to be much more job-intensive and also are an essential part of what occurs Just in terms of the proposal, we're also proposing to grandfather all existing self-storage facilities, so those, those would be permitted to remain and they could also extend or enlarge within the original zoning as of the date of enactment of this proposal. What this really means is that self-storage facilities that are currently to date underbilled could build out to the permitted FAR but not beyond that. And if a self-storage facility were to make a minor alteration, they wouldn't need to come in for a special permit, which is, is seen as an undue burden. Every, every special permit comes with proposed findings and if an applicant can make those findings, then the special permit can be granted. So for this, for the self-storage special permit, we're proposing that the City Planning Commission evaluate whether the proposed site would be an adequate site for an industrial, for an industrial business. Is it likely that an industrial business would sign on this site? And this really depends on the correct characteristics of the site. And so the City Planning Commission would have several considerations to look at and this would depend on the zoning lot size. The larger the site, usually the better it would be for an industrial business. The lot configuration is, often in self-storage facilities are conversions or have been in the past at least. So if it was a building proposed for conversion, does the building have existing loading docks? Does it have freight elevators? Does it have appropriate column spacing for an industrial business? Or does it lack those elements which might make it more appropriate for self-storage? Is the proposed site close or, closer further away from truck routes? Is the local, is the local street providing access to the zoning lot narrow or is it wide? If it's narrow, it might not be able to handle truck traffic potentially an industrial business could generate, so it might be an appropriate site for a self-storage facility. Furthermore, we have included considerations that, that look at investment in comparable sites in the area or the buildings occupied. Are there active industrial businesses in these, in these buildings or are they vacant? Are they abandoned? Does the, does the area, would area benefit for some, from some investment? The City Planning Commission would also look at environmental contamination of the site. Is any investment better than none? Or if there's a potential for conflict with existing, pre-existing uses that would perhaps conflict with industrial uses such as pre-existing residential, residential or community facility, we might not want to facilitate industrial development in an area right next to, right next to pre-existing houses. So those are the considerations that we're proposing for the special permit and any application wouldn't need to make, wouldn't need to meet all of these considerations because this is just a palette of options essentially that exist and one or two of these, one or two of these considerations could already be grounds for granting or not the special permit. The special permit process, so this is the process that an applicant for self-storage facility in an IDZ would need to go through, involves land use and environmental review and then a whole Yulet process. We think this, it's a very thorough review process that tends to take approximately two years and we see that this is a significant hurdle to self-storage development. It does include community board review or president review and the City Planning Commission and the City Council can also vote on the item. So it takes quite a long time, but we do think that this case by case review process is, is worth it to maintain siding opportunities for industrial businesses in IDZs. This is the timeline of the text amendment, so it was first announced in November of 2015. We developed a proposal and held a scoping, a scoping meeting in March. It was referred out at the City Planning Commission review session in late May and now we're in the, in the Yulet process. It's not actually Yulet item, so we're in the non-Yulet public review process that will, where community boards, borough presidents, and borough boards can pitch in for the next 60 days, which the review period could close on July 30th, 2017. Most community boards in Queens have already voted on this item, there are still a few pending, pending community boards that will leave. So thank you so much for your attention. Just to clarify, this item was referred out to the community boards that have IDZs within, within their boundaries and this affects community boards one, two, five, nine, 10, 12, and 13 in Queens. And there is about another month, the review period will last for another month for everybody to give us, give us their feedback. So yeah, thank you very much.
We have, we have talked about this a lot.
Yes.
And we've already had a presentation at the board, although lecture's official, I guess it was the official presentation, we haven't voted on it yet. We asked the question, I think there were two questions asked at the Borough Board that I'm not sure that we received answers on, maybe we have, but I just don't know it yet, but we'll keep that for the record. So you told us that there are two storage facilities placed in the IDZs about every year?
Yeah.
And so I'd asked how many of those have been in Queens over the last, oh, two, five, whatever years you had?
Yeah.
I also had asked how many storage facilities were placed outside of the IDZs in Queens. Clearly, the theory being that once they're not allowed in the IDZ without a special permit process, they will be going to other places that purposely were not in the IDZs because they were close to residential, which is council, I don't know, council and councilors wrote this up at the Borough Board, but it is one of the standing issues.
So I don't have a count of what has happened exactly in the last 10 years. This does show that there are 63 facilities and in Queens, 25 of them are in IDZs, so about.
But those 25 could have been placed 20 years ago, right? Which is, I just don't know, right?
Yeah.
If the argument is that we want to promote economic development and larger industrial projects in the areas that self-storage is taking up, I sort of need to have a context of how many, how much that's a problem in Queens. I just don't know.
Right.
You may say to me, it's a huge problem, all, two of them every year in the IDZs in Queens.
Right.
I don't know. And so we really need those numbers.
If, if you allow, I'll follow up with you and get back to you for numbers of development for the last 10 years.
I'd like to know how many of the two a year self-storage facilities that are placed in the IDZ zones have been in Queens. And then what would be, I think, helpful to know is how many self-storage facilities, I guess for whatever reasons, are placed outside the IDZ zones in areas that are now manufactured. I mean, the 10 legal non-performing, I assume were grandfathered somehow.
Yeah.
You know, assuming.
For the most part, those were either pre-existing warehouses, pre-existing to the zoning and so they were allowed to convert to self-storage.
Some of them were there for decades, right? And so then we.
Well, not as self-storage facilities, but they happen there as industrial warehouses for their days.
So we have about 52 that we're sort of asking about, right? Just, can you give me those numbers?
Yes.
I think that's the council's issue, which is that if you're not allowing them in IDZ zones, then they're going to go out to the manufacturing zones that were not included in the original plan and has IDZ. And I think there's a reason that those locations are not included in the original plan.
Right.
And so I think that's.
Okay. I will definitely get you those numbers. We understand your concern.
Have you thought about a, a size limit for the special permit? Like if it's over a certain amount of square feet, is a special permit required? If it's under a certain amount of square feet, ostensibly not as much opportunity for the larger industrial, then you don't need one?
That's, that's not, in the environmental review, we analyzed a few alternatives to the proposed action. The small, exempting small sites from special requirement is an alternative to be analyzed. I think we, we define small site as being smaller than 20,000 square feet. That's, that seemed to be on the small end for self-storage and also for industrial uses. In the analysis we did, we also saw that on those, on sites of those sizes in IDZs, there were considerable amount of industrial businesses. So ultimately, we think proposed action is better than, than just excluding the small sites, but it is, it is an option we have contemplated as an alternative in the, in the environmental review. There's a second option that we have contemplated, which is a misuse requirement for self-storage facilities. That's also not too bad as an alternative to the proposed action.
So both of them would be within the scope of the City Council?
It depends on how exactly they would pencil out, but to a certain extent, they could be within scope, yes. That, that was the intention of including them in the environmental review. We also heard concerns from communities and the self-storage industry at the scoping meeting. This is why we analyzed the alternative. We also declared an impact on the, the potential for significant impact on the self-storage industry, which is why we looked at alternatives that would, that we assumed would reduce the impact of the problem. No time to worry.
Any questions? Are you going to stay around while, there's only four folks, right, that want to testify? So I appreciate it. Thank you. I mean, thanks City Planning, by the way. I have to say, for their proposals, they certainly work and come out and have the discussion. So thank you.
You're very welcome.
So we have one, two, three. Who lost one? The next one. We have three, three testifying. So Michael Brady, ANHD is four, he's texted in. If you could join us, Mr. Brady, that'd be great.
Thanks.
No special thing?
Good morning and thank you very much for, for allowing us to testify this morning. My name is Michael Brady and I lead the industrial development capacity efforts at the Association for Neighborhood and Housing Development, ANHD. ANHD is a membership organization in New York City composed of neighborhood-based housing and economic development groups. Together with our groups of about over 100 members, we build flourishing communities and really try to foster economic development that is equitable. Amongst other of our accomplishments, our members have created and developed over 100,000 units of affordable housing and have really delved into industrial development. My prior history, before coming on to ANHD, I was the master planner for the Bronx waterfront and also managed five IDZs in the Bronx. As part of the Industrial Jobs Coalition, a citywide alliance of policy advocates, community organizations, and service providers, we, ANHD, strongly support the city's proposed zoning text amendment to create a special permit for self-storage facilities in the 21 industrial business zones. Industrial policy and zoning has an enormous effect on our communities and on the economic development of our boroughs. Protecting and promoting our industrial sector is crucial to the city's overall economic development. The sector provides over 450,000 jobs in New York City, making up nearly 15% of our city's workforce while contributing over $1.7 billion in annually tax revenue. ANHD humbly requests that support the city's Borough President for the self-storage text amendment and urges the Borough President to encourage our friends in City Planning to fully realize the promises for robust protections for our industrial boroughs. For too long, self-storage companies have utilized one of our city's scariest resources, land, and produced little result in economic and community development activity. There is broad need to protect industrial manufacturing businesses across our five boroughs and we encourage, with the help of our Borough Presidents, that the administration of City Planning continue to strengthen industrial protections of which this text amendment is a part. I thank you for your time. If you have any more details, you know, if you've got it here, but I'll keep it brief and we'll be copying some of the brief times. So thank you very much.
We appreciate your testimony and your timing.
Reveni is very important.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Marc Sharon, Safe Lock Storage?
My name is Marc Sharon. I'm a co-founder and CEO of Safe Lock Self-Storage. Safe Lock employs 21 people, heads offices and fundships in the borough of the Bronx, creates funds and jobs, creates self-storage development throughout the city, including Queens. Make no mistake about what City Planning is proposing, this is a ban on self-storage. A time-consuming, unpredictable, unusually discretionary process makes it impossible to develop this secure financing and to provide investors with an accurate timeline for construction. City Planning stays in its scope document, excuse me, overbooked. CPC Special Permits present this, a disincentive to the development of self-storage developed facilities since obtaining a special permit can add significant time, cost, and uncertainty to a project, end quote. According to City Planning, IDZs represent nearly 50% of available development sites. Banning self-storage in these areas strangle an industry already severely restricted with American development. The remaining half of available land, which are M-zone and C8 sites, are filled with unsuitable sites. As a result, Safe Lock Self-Storage. As a result, Safe and Lock Self-Storage will shut its doors. We cannot be a self-storage developer because city that bans self-storage. Self-storage is a driver of economic activity in New York City. It provides affordable warehousing, convenient logistics for businesses that cannot store large warehouses, provides working class and middle-class New Yorkers living in small apartments with storage that is otherwise unavailable. According to a recent citywide survey, a 1,000-unit self-storage facility supports 300 local businesses, 47% of which are owned by women or minorities. These businesses are our most active customers. They occupy the largest spaces, and more than two-thirds of them access their goods daily or weekly. It should come as no surprise that the Greens, Bronx, and local chambers of Congress have all come out in opposition to this tax amendment on behalf of more than 5,000 businesses. Banning self-storage, which represents less than 2% of the IBCs, will not bring a single manufacturer job back to the city. However, it will make order for manufacturers and other businesses to survive in this already difficult business environment. It will pave the way for other non-manufacturing uses like nightlife, entertainment, truck depots, and tow packs. Many dilapidated sites will remain community eyesore for longer periods of time, and working class New Yorkers and small businesses will be forced to pay higher self-storage rates and this competition will be eradicated. The demand for self-storage is at an all-time high, more than 90% occupancy of those facilities. We are seeking a compromise. City Planning says they want to preserve large sites near truck routes and tractor while allowing self-storage developers to continue to build elsewhere. Then why require a special permit for all sites? And why not allow, as of right development, on sites of 50,000, excuse my public sense, 50,000 square feet or less in IBCs for the larger sites where required self-storage developers allocate space to manufacturers? This would truly need the city's objectives of creating space for industrial businesses while creating a suitable seating opportunity for the self-storage industry. Thank you for your time.
What would be considered large sites?
Sixty-seven.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Quincy Elykakes, VOC Network, MIBA.
Thank you for letting me present today. My name is Quincy Elykakes. I work at the Business Outreach Center Network, and I'm the industrial business provider for Central Queens, which includes the IBCs of Steinway, Ridgewood, Woodside, and Masbeth. I'm also the coordinator for the Masbeth Industrial Business Association. Manufacturing and industrial businesses in Masbeth, Ridgewood, and Steinway and Woodside provide tens of thousands of livable wage jobs for New Yorkers. These businesses are currently under tremendous pressure from the increase in real estate rents as developers encroach on these areas with speculation of alternative uses. Requiring a special permit for self-storage development is an important first step to protecting and preserving these designated zones for their intended use. It is also important to note that it's critical that the special permit is expanded to include other alternative uses such as hotels and event spaces in order to stop the loss of livable wage jobs in these local communities. Once these jobs are gone, they will not be coming back. In the Masbeth IBC alone, there are over 850 industrial businesses which provide over 15,000 jobs. Most of these businesses are small, local businesses, and 75% of them have fewer than 20 employees. Many of these businesses have been operating in these areas for generations and, in some instances, employ whole families. Manufacturing and industrial jobs in New York City pay workers an average of $50,000 per year, twice as much as what those same workers would earn in the service industry. Additionally, employees who work in these jobs typically haven't had access to traditional higher education, which other living wage jobs require. Ultimately, I support the spirit of the self-storage special permit and its intentions, which will directly preserve and protect the critical space that form the IBCs and help combat a portion of the speculative real estate pricing in these areas. However, I would like to note that this is not the only use that should be limited, and I can only hope that this is just a start, which will lead to including the limiting of other uses that eat up critical space and do not generate livable wage jobs for the surrounding community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'd like to request City Planning to come back up and just talk about some of these little ways. Brady?
Thank you. The test went through Safe and Lock, which I think is there the large sites between 60 to 70,000. So I guess the question is, in looking at IBCs across, I could get that good, can you capitalize a lot of sites in terms of the proposed modification that they ordered? What I'm saying is, are there a lot of projects that are in 60,000 to 70,000 square feet? Are there a lot of projects that are 50,000 square feet? I mean, earlier you said you considered in the DIS, up to 20,000 square feet as a small lot.
As well, small. So just, I think, in looking at self-storage numbers, there aren't many self-storage facilities that have been developed on a lot smaller than 20,000.
I think in terms of potential lots in the IBCs.
Yeah. Yeah. So the median size of a self-storage facility is, I think, between 40 and 45,000 square feet. So 60 to 70 would match with us as being large. Since this is a citywide, this proposal is citywide, it affects all IBCs, and there are thousands of sites in these areas. I don't think I know off the top of my head what the size of those sites is. Typically, we have a section in the environmental review that does look at the lots of, the lot sizes of the, in IBCs and also outside, in M and C8 districts outside of IBCs. We did an analysis of where self-storage facilities could feasibly sit outside of IBCs. But I think it is in the hundreds for most of the, even the large sites exist in the hundreds. But I don't want to be more specific because I might say something that's not correct.
You can say the data is in the IBS.
Yes. Yes. It's in the, it should be in the land use, the land use chapter that's on our website. But I'm happy to send it to you also, and you should have received the copy.
You said the DIS analyzes 20,000 square feet or less, but I assume that if the City Council decided it should be 50,000 square feet or less or 60,000, it's still within scope.
It's still within scope because it would be less restrictive than what we are proposing.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? The other is close. Thank you.
Altered item number six. Deal of number 170336C, NFQ. The applicant, Morton Houston Powers, N, LCP. Effect to Community Board, number 12.
Hello. This is how we do it.
It keeps switching.
Yes, we taxi here at Borough Hall.
So far, everybody's been prettier than Jay, so. All they're standing up, I'll start talking, because I know you've got some time constraints. Oh, that doesn't, that doesn't. That doesn't happen, though, like time. You don't need the air conditioning. Yeah, that's I used to. We got them open. Good morning. So we have a great development to present to you today, one that's been well-supported by Community Board 12, is well-supported by the Council Men's Office, and it's been brought by a local organization that does nothing but good deeds, and that's the Northeastern Conference, the Seventh Day Adventists, the Northeastern Conference. And with us today is Dr. Henri, and he's going to speak about it, but also members of the development team, which includes the Fifth Avenue Committee, which is a very well-recognized nonprofit that does entirely affordable housing. They've been around for many years, actively involved in jobs in Brooklyn. Councilman Brad Lander, I like to say all the time, said I had some name recognition for them, was a former president or chief operating officer, whatever the title may be of the organization. And they're entirely committed to providing affordable housing. And so is Seventh Day Adventists, who are headquartered right here in Queens, and they've got a tremendous following, and they already operate the existing building that's there right now that's 12 stories tall. It's on Guyborough Boulevard. It's at the corner of Guyborough Boulevard and 132nd Avenue, and it's in an R3X district that really is a cross street from an R6 district, and we are asking for a rezoning to extend the R6 district that's across the street to our property. And by doing that, we'll allow for the property, our property, which is rather large, to accommodate a second tower on it. Right now, there's already a 12-story building on it, and we're asking to build a 10-story building. And Jeff, if you could put up the rendering while they talk. The other one's better. That second one, I get, that one's better. Shows it more context. So that is the development of what we're going to be creating, and it's going to be a senior housing development. You can see on the right side in that rendering, it's just a rendering, is the existing building. That's what you see coming up at the right side. And on the left side is the new building that's going to be constructed, and they're going to be connected by a small period, a small portion that'll connect the two buildings. When we're fully built under the R6 development scenario, it'll be 10 stories to all the proposed building. It'll have approximately 129, excuse me, I'm a bit cold, I'm going to sniffle. Cold, bed foot, will fall apart. 129 HERS units will be within the development, and it'll be entirely affordable. Be Section 202 rental assistance. Let everybody else talk about all the different funding sources that are coming into play. And it'll be operated by the church, that Seventh Day Adventists. There's a waiting list right now in the existing building. The facilities manager, Shannon, is not here today, but she'll tell you that she gets calls, 10 to 15 calls a day from people trying to get in. We will have plenty of parking. We're going to have 90 parking spaces. Only 60 are required, but we'd encourage if anybody was concerned about parking to go out to the site and take a look at it on any given day. The existing parking lot for the existing building is empty most of the time. Most of the people that live there, not the seniors, don't have cars. Most of the people that live in this development, these seniors, most of them don't have cars. And we spoke about that at the Community Board, and they were aware of it, and they supported the application because they were aware of that as well. The other thing we wanted to make you aware of that occurred at the Community Board level was they were very concerned about garbage. There is a garbage problem in the area. There's both an illegal dumping problem as well as a litter problem occurring. The illegal dumping, Seventh Day Adventists are working with the police precinct to try to curb the illegal dumping, because that's obviously other people doing, and they have a hard time controlling other people. But any garbage that is litter that ends up around has been determined because they don't have a proper storage area for their garbage right now. So in this new development, there's going to be the closed garbage area that's going to be an indoor area for the garbage to be stored, so it'll be taken out to the curb and picked up. And that was something that the Community Board was very happy about as well because there was litter problems that goes on in the area, and not just for this building, it's a larger problem. We met with the Community Board about a week ago, it was a week ago yesterday, I think, or a week ago Tuesday, and the Community Board voted to approve the application. It was just a few people who dissented, but mostly it was a supported application. And everybody's here to talk about the planning of this project.
Thank you for having me. I'm Michael Rose with the City's Development Team. Thanks to Eric for hearing this project. I just wanted to add a little bit more information about the development. Just anything I had. Okay, so this is a 10-story add, it's going to affect the existing building. It's going to add 147 apartments, and these are smaller units that have been built under the HERS, being so many designation accordingly, depending on some of the seniors. It's designed with smaller units and extra onsite services, and that's to allow Asian influence. So the most building is going to result in 1.94 FAR for the whole site. As Eric mentioned, we're providing what we think is ample parking, exceeds its own requirements, and it exceeds, exceeds what was existing on the site right now. We did hear from the CP that adding additional height in the site was a concern, so the development is designed to minimize the impact on the neighbors, the neighboring little family homes on the west and north by deciding to develop on the south side of our property here. So, and also the setbacks, as you can see in this development here, in this rendering here, the western side of the new development, the building sets down a little bit, and that's to minimize the shadows across 161st Street onto the senior family. Part of the goal of this project is to improve the onsite services, both through the existing building and for the new residents. So we do expect that both the new residents and the existing residents will use the wellness center, the community room, the media room, and the social services office. That's going to be provided with the development. Just to give you an idea of the affordability, this is being built under the HPD CER program, and it will be 100% Section 8 project-based vouchers. So this, just to give you an idea of what the current income limits for the Section 8 program are, 50% AMI. This year, the income of it is $33,400 for a one-person household and $38,200 for a two-person household. And the chart at the bottom here just gives you an idea of example, household incomes, and what the tenant will pay under Section 8 program. Ten's paying 30% of their income. These are the subsides. There will be a subside, an overall preference for Queens County residents, this is under HUD guidelines, and there will be a 30% homeless subside for formerly homeless seniors, and at least 2% and at least 5% of the households will be subside for hearing and then mobility and parents. And this is just giving you an idea of the timeline. We're going through Goulart now. We hope to be in construction in June 2018, so to your construction terms of the apartments we are developing. Not bad. Thanks for your questions.
Sure. So I see CB12 approved it, but they were about 10% saying folks. Do you know what the opposition to the project?
You did a bridge.
You were four first, and now why don't you speak, Jay?
One part of the opposition was how to do with the smaller unit size. So they are looking for more multifamily units, I think they see in the, for more family housing in the area, but this is designed to accommodate the smaller senior households. People won't exclude, I think this was a point of discussion, Community Board meeting, won't exclude seniors who are taking care of grandchildren, children. There won't be, the age restriction is one-person household, that's going to be the 62-year threshold.
So the, the size of the unit or the family size of the unit?
I think they wanted, they were looking to provide more multifamily units, which is actually something we would, we'd like to provide to accommodate non-sent caretakers, but we're running difficulty finding programs that were.
Yeah, I'll add to that. So--
Let me just state your name.
Jay Marcus, I'm also with the City's Community. And I do want to mention the, there was opposition, I guess we heard from a couple of areas, both at the, what we did individually with a lot of community groups, and they mirrored what we heard at the Community Board. One was, again, as Michael pointed out, the two bedrooms. I should mention that we are going to be asking HPD to try to improve some two bedrooms because we understand that you do want this to be aging in place. I think, Michael, before, they have rather more extensive number of community and service spaces specifically to enable living in space. We have things like laundry rooms on every floor, the TV rooms to make it easier for people as they age, to be able to do the laundry, things of that sort. We are deliberately having L-shaped evening studios to be able to enable some privacy with the caregiver, but the two bedrooms for people as they age and need more intensive care, we would like to have. So we are going to be requesting a small percentage of HPD. We're not sure we'll get that, as Michael mentioned, the program guidelines are permitted, but we will be seeking a waiver for that.
And then that would reduce the number of units or the amount of amenities of the building?
I think it would reduce the number of units, but probably along the lines to our architect, probably, you know, better, we're looking at the numbers on this, probably to about 139 or 130. 130 was the, which was the original, what we had two bedrooms in this scheme. And then the other, the other point of opposition, it wasn't opposition, it was concern, I think the committee in particular felt we addressed it well. Early on, we had heard that both local jobs and NWBE were high priority for this Community Board. In fact, one of the reasons we had some three finalists of our general contractors, we won't be selected in part was because they had the strongest record. They all were good on these issues, but they had the strongest record of really working with local job training agencies, with local hires, and wrapping an extensive list of subcontractors that were NWBEs that would easily meet the 25% city requirement, and we believe would are urging also exceed that. So there was originally concern-- both that we voted in individually with a lot of community groups, and they mirrored what we heard from the community board. One was, again, as Michael pointed out, the two-bedrooms. I should mention that we are going to be asking HPD to try to include some two-bedrooms, because we understand and we do want this to be aging in place. I think, Michael, before, they grabbed a more extensive number of community and service spaces, specifically to enable living space. We have things like laundry rooms on every floor, the TV rooms to make it easier for people as they age, to be able to do the laundry, things of that sort. We are deliberately having L-shaped eating studios to be able to enable some privacy with the caregiver, but the two-bedrooms for people who last age and need more intensive care, women like that. So we are going to be requesting a small percentage of HPD, we're not sure we'll get that, as Michael mentioned, the program guidelines are permitted, but we will be seeking a way for that.
And then that would reduce the number of units, or the amount of amenities in the building?
I think it would reduce the number of units, but probably along lines to our architect, probably, no better, we're looking at the numbers on this, probably to about 139, or 130, 130 was the, which was the original, what we had two bedrooms in this scheme. And then the other, the other point of opposition, it wasn't opposition, it was concern, I think the committee in particular felt we addressed it well. Early on, we had heard that both local jobs and NWBE were high priority for this community board. In fact, one of the reasons we had some three finalists of our general contractors, the ones selected in part was because they had the strongest record, they all were good on these issues, but they had the strongest record of really working with local job training agencies, with the local hires, and wrapping an extensive list of subcontractors that were NWBEs that would easily make the 25% city requirement, and we believe would, are urging and also pushing to exceed that. So there was originally concern expressed on that, that question was raised against the community board, but again, I think the committee, who dealt with more detail, felt we had addressed the issue very much. I believe those were the major two issues. Earlier on, we did hear about wanting more parking, I think that's mainly the perception that Hoshville builds around the parking, and this is across the street.
How many parking spaces are currently there?
Currently there's 43, 43, 40...
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. Forty-seven, I remember, yeah, forty-seven.
Proposed 90.
Proposed 90. We should mention that the council person did request to set aside five spaces for the school across the street, which will be part of those 90, and we are expecting that part of the service entities will be some sort of social, some sort of senior center. There are already four within a mile radius, so we don't think it will be a full one, whereas we look at senior centers without having some active space there, so that, separate from the residential needs, which as Eric pointed out, we feel fairly minimal, we may also create some additional parking.
Yeah, just have one question. I'm looking at full-site planning, and I don't know if this represents the landscaping that we're doing, but I'm assuming that any of the landscaping is only required to be sold.
Hi, Eric Plannick. Yeah, the landscaping that's under zoning will be fully combined with, but we plan on doing even more landscaping. We haven't gotten to fleshing out entirely, but the church is spending quite a bit of money on the development and their whole perspective on it to beautify the site, so we do intend to do even more landscaping than what's shown on the final grade.
Why you guys hold some sensitivity to the resident community needs to the north?
Right, and actually, that's something that was brought out a lot. Steve Everett happens to be here, he's the planner that's helped shepherd this through, and one thing that he had us do was to create a buffer zone on the side of the property next to the residential home, so that we're actually not enlarging, we're not enlarging the zoning district, we're maintaining the R3X district up to a 30-foot buffer from the homes, and that was done specifically aimed to create a buffer area, as well as to prevent future improvements to the church. Who knows what will happen in 100 years, maybe the church won't be here anymore, and the private developer will come in, but at that point, there'll be a protection for the residential neighbors next door on that side over there, and Jessica's pointing out, the red line is pointing out the rear property line to those homes that front, what is that, 162nd Avenue there, on the top? Legendary first, excuse me. And the red line is their rear yard, and the dash line shows where the zoning district will be, so the area between the red and the dash is the buffer area.
All right, if we can just stay close, in case we have a different question, we're going to call the first person to turn. All right. Passes with others.
I think they're all with us, by the way.
Oh. Daniel.
Why have to speak after he speaks, George Trump? Good morning. My name is Daniel Henri, and I am the president of the Northeastern Conference of Seventh-day Adventists. We are a religious organization with about 55,000 parishioners spread out, over 200 congregations, most of those here in the metropolitan New York area. We are sponsoring this project because we see it as part of our social obligation to improve our community. Of the community areas that we improve, we have about 15 elementary schools and two high schools here in New York for the betterment of our youth. Right here, here in Corona, we operate a community center that feeds about 900 families every month. We also have a campground of 120 acres, about two hours north, where during the summer we take kids from the city so that they can have a wholesome environment and camping activities. We see this project as a continuation of a project that we started 30 years ago with the Northeastern Tower, and as our council stated, this tower has a long waiting list. As a matter of fact, it's about a five-year waiting list for seniors wanting to get in. We know that there is a shortage of housing for seniors in our community, we believe that this new development will respond to that need. One of my favorite aspects of this project is that it will also contain a community center, a senior center for our seniors in the community, and will be open also to non-residents during daylight hours for their benefits. We believe that this project enhances our community, our corporate offices are about a mile away from the site, and aside from that, it will generate revenue, it will generate employment, not only during construction, but for the caretakers who come and serve the residents of this new building, and the residual employment that that will also create. So we want to join in making Queen clever. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One question. I explained earlier to you a few things, you're saying your senior center will be available on a daily basis to the community at our...
Pardon?
I was saying that the senior center that will be on site will be available on a daily basis to the senior community that are around it.
That is our hope, that is our goal, to also have a community, a senior center for the community at our.
And how will you make that known?
What's that?
How will you make that known?
Who will be operating the senior center?
That will be our conference through our community services department.
And what will be your outreach?
Outreach will be to other community agencies, through the churches, through the community at our.
All right. Actually, we're good.
It's a great budget, it's a great budget.
Any other speakers? This item is now closed.
Thank you for your time, have a nice day to God.
Our next hearing is at some point July 20th.
Somewhere after some vacation, after a vacation.
So for that today, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
My time was...
He's moving around.
It's a funny, that's right. It's not a new one, but yeah, it's happened before. It's the first time I told this story.
It's the first time I told this story.
No, we're going to, we're going to come back to Queens also.